Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Board of Education study session on February 20th, 2025. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Harper if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All members are present except for Mr. Houston. At this time, I would like to see if there is a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll vote to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Gardner moves. Ms. Harper, seconds. I do want everybody to consider this motion carefully, so we will take a moment to compose ourselves.
You think that this is the only motion needed tonight? Would you like to?
Yeah, can we do a hand vote, please? All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes four to zero. All right. Do we have any public comments tonight? Seeing no public comments, we will move on to Item C1, planning for the 25-26 school year. Mr. Maguire.
Good evening, Board President Paulson, Board members, cabinet, Dr. Barra, everybody watching at home. First of all, to start off with, I've just gotten over a cold, so my voice is not perfect tonight, and I have a cough drop in, so forgive me if, let me know if you can't hear me, I'll repeat myself or try to speak up. Okay. What's before us tonight is our study session that we do generally every year in February as we start to prepare for our adopted budget for next fiscal year, which also would include where we're at so far this year and some of the planning around what we're doing to continue to stabilize our budget. So let's dive right in. So first, I want to start off with where we were last. So the last time I talked to you and stood before you representing our budget was our first interim back in December. And this is what it was. So this is as of, as if we were standing in December. So we were still, the red numbers on top, looking for ways to reduce our unrestricted general fund expenses by 4.6 million in the next year and the following year of 3.3 million. And doing so, we would maintain a fiscal solvency there, the green box in our ending fund balance in that third year. And I get asked quite a bit, like, what's that goal? What's the goal ending balance that you're looking for and working towards? And kind of just as a general rule, is our minimum required reserve plus about 5 million. Now, remember, the minimum reserve of about 11 million is barely enough to get us through half a month of payroll. An additional 5 million isn't going to get us through that full month, but what it's there for, it just gives us time to plan and to make adjustments if there were something to happen catastrophic with funding in some way, to give us time to plan and adjust for that. So now we'll move on to past December, go through the winter break, and here we are in February. So I want to set the stage for what we're here doing tonight. So first of all, this is a study session. So I'm going to stand up here and I'm going to do a lot of, I've talked, a lot of discussion about this. So I want, it's a two-way conversation. But the study session around our, our planning for our district, our budget, all of that, that's an ongoing study session that we're all doing every day here in this building. And really, what I want to do here tonight is to bring our board into what we do on a daily basis in this. It's a conversation. And so every time I'm going through a lot of information, I'm sure all this information, and if anybody has any input questions, any clarity, comments, or anything, please jump right in at any time. So first, when we set the stage for going to our adopted budget, you kind of start with like, what's our, that core fundamental for building the budget around? And so we were, I was drawing it up on the whiteboard in my office, and really what kind of came home was, we got to do everything we can to protect our people. And that's what I wrote kind of the top, I wrote that on my board, reduce non-people so that we don't need to reduce people. And so what you see, that's the, the blue circle. So I drew up the non-people, and that's what's on the left. And then I drew people, and I just grabbed the pen. It was blue. I circled people, and it became the blue circle. So you might hear me reference quite a bit, protecting the blue circle, that's protecting our people. So when we, when I listed out the non-people stuff, like, what are those things that we can go look at and how we can use those reductions there to protect our bottom line, to reduce our unrestricted general fund expenses? And that's, so start off with vacancies. So yes, certainly vacancies used to be full of a person, but this is after, and most of this, what we're talking about in this vacancies is our classified staff. And we build positions into our district, into our whole operation, based on what the needs of the district are, what we need to support. And that's how we determine what positions to have, how many, and that sort of thing. But anytime someone leaves a position, we want to look at that and determine, is this need that led to us having that position still there? And so we may not need to backfill that position at all. Maybe we need to move that resource of a position somewhere else to where we have a need. And we can do that when someone vacates that position, creating the vacancy. And we're certain right now, we have several vacancies that we're holding on to as we continue to determine our need and as part of also in our, in our protecting our unrestricted general fund ending balance. Then leases. And so one of the, the big lease that we have is for our Apple products, so our iPads or MacBooks for our staff, and looking at ways that we can reduce that cost and not necessarily reduce having those things, although we are looking at reducing the need for iPads maybe in our lower grades, we're still working through what that might look like. But again, this is not just about budget cuts, it's about utilizing all of our available resources outside of our unrestricted general fund to reduce those expenses, and that's the, the main column that we're after, the unrestricted general fund. That's what determines our fiscal solvency truly. And so we'll talk more about what that means here in a little bit. Contracted services, and by that, what I'm talking about is like consultant agreements, things of that nature, those kind of contracts that we're looking at, do we need that still? Is it meeting our need? Is it something that we just have and we keep moving forward? And so looking at that really hard now, and is this something we still need? And can we reduce it? And so there are some things that we're recommending for reductions in that category. Software. We have lots of different software in the district, lots of different programs, some of it great, some of it maybe it's lived past, it's, it's, we don't really need it as much anymore, it's not meeting our need. Maybe there's something better. So certainly, there's some software programs that we're looking at recommending reducing as well, because they're no longer something that we truly need right now. Supplies. This was a big part of the conversation last year. We went from the January through our adopted budget for last year of reducing our budgets, kind of slowing down our spending. A lot of that was on supplies. And certainly, there's an amount of supplies we need in every classroom, in our offices for us to carry out our jobs. And we wanted to get down to, what is that, that minimum level of supplies that we need to get our jobs done? And certainly, in future years, things improve, there could be additional things that maybe would help even more, but aren't necessarily that, that minimum need, that standard. And right now, that's what we're searching for, is what is that true cost of doing business? What is that minimum need? And so that's where, if we can reduce supply costs as much as we can without impacting our ability to do our jobs, that's what we're after when it comes to that. Now, reorganization. It kind of, it's similar to the vacancy conversation. And this is where perhaps we have a personnel, you might see this a lot in our certificated staff, where, you know, maybe the student population, there's an enrollment decline more in our overall district, maybe some more so at one school, but another school might be growing, we might need to move a teacher, for instance, from one school to another. That's, that's what I mean by reorganization, and even our classified staff. Like I said, we have a vacancy, or even someone that is just in the position, but we need to move that person, be needing that position, and the person with it somewhere else. And that's reorganization. So we're going to talk, and I'm going to go into a lot more detail on what these things mean and how it applies to what we're doing to manage our budget as we go through tonight. Now, funding sources, I kind of touched on that a little bit, and that's what funding sources do we have outside of our unrestricted general fund that we can use to pay for some of the things that we can't really live without, but we may not be able to afford in the unrestricted general fund at this time? And so I'm going to walk through some, some of this, this is going to be a little bit more in some little bit more detail, so bear with me. So first of all, a thing on that list there is Medi-Cal. Now, some good news, for once, from the state, is there's been a change in what qualifies for reimbursements through Medi-Cal. A lot of the services that are, some of our staff provide in our special education program, and we can go get reimbursed through the Medi-Cal program from the state, and the state's updated what qualifies for that. And surprisingly, they allowed us to go back several years and re, and get further reimbursements than what we did in those years. And so we've gotten some increase in revenue through this program, some of the catch-up from previous years based on that. So that was really good news. In addition to that, through some of the good work of Patrick in our special ed department, he's back here, it's Patrick, and his team is some tightening the practices of that, so that we're guaranteeing, we're maximizing how much reimbursements we can get going forward. And so from the catch-up of the old funds to that, we've developed kind of a, a higher amount of revenue. Some of it's one-time, because they're the catch-up money, but we'll talk about something that we can do with that here in just a second, even before I leave this slide. And then the RDA, which is the redevelopment agency, talked a little bit about that in previous presentations, without going into all the weeds and detailed details of what that is. It's a funding source that we're getting, you know, through the state, through the redevelopment agencies, an amount of money comes in, and we share a high school district based on our enrollment, and that actually expires in 2033. But other than that, there's another risk that's even, I would say, we know we have a, we can plan for a known deadline, a known, you know, end date. But it's also tied to some debt that the city is carrying. And if the city continues to make their debt service payments, interest payments on that debt, then we continue to get this revenue stream. But if the city decides to pay that debt off, the revenue stream shifts to them at a lower amount, and we, the high school district, lose it. And so right now, we're assured that, that that's not something they didn't do at the last December, that's kind of when they make that decision, the city council, that they're not looking at doing that right now, and we're definitely engaging with them and talks about trying to get to an agreement to guarantee that they will not do that, so that we can continue to maintain this funding stream all the way through its ending, 2033. Mr. Paulson.
Okay, Mr. Maguire, on this topic of the redevelopment funds, the, the city has in the past attempted to make that payment, but we have a legal agreement with them, do we not? Can we just get clarification saying they will not pay that off and we will continue to get the RDA funds? Am I correct about that, that that's actually a legal agreement that was drafted by the previous city attorney?
That is correct. We have a, there was an agreement for PAC payments, and so we entered into an agreement with the city for, just to find. That's what they asked, so when we tried to make that payment, it was based on the dissolution of all the redevelopment agencies. And so therefore, they were trying to make a case that that agreement is null and void. So we were going to begin entering into some pretty long-term, but, but we were going to strike an interim agreement, which says, hold on, they're not going to do that, giving us time to kind of enter into a new agreement that'll keep it moving forward. So that's kind of where we are at this point. But yes, you're absolutely correct. We have a document that was signed that says they're not for PAC payments.
So I would ask staff to please keep a surprise if, if the city were to be considering anything like this. I think we would want notification so we could go and prior to them making the decision.
Oh, we will be engaging our board to take it up to the city council to ensure that we can maintain this very necessary funding stream for us, absolutely. This is a team effort here.
Definitely.
So, and I have a whole slide about this later and some of the things we're talking about with that, but that's another source, because we have also been tapering it off in its contribution to our general fund. We have some of that money, and I have a plan for what we need to do with that, or what we recommend to do with that here going forward as well, to help us to continue to reduce our general fund expenses. They may have greater effectiveness, that's another one-time money grant from the state. It actually has an expiration date at the end of next year, so we have to spend it down by the end of next year. That's intended kind of in just the most general of terms for professional development and things related to that. So we'll talk a little bit more about that and some of what we're asking or we're recommending to do with that for now. But that kind of goes to the use of the most restricted funds first. So just as an example, there might be something, without going into a lot of detail, that qualifies or that we can use Title I funds for, for instance, is a very restricted resource, right? Now, of course, we can use our unrestricted unlimited use kind of money in our unrestricted general fund for that, but if it qualifies for one of the restricted resources, that's what we want to budget that in, that expense into first. So every, so we get rid of all of the things that only can go into those, and then that leaves us with the unrestricted general fund for things that don't have a restricted resource for. So just to help us to manage and make sure we're not leave, left, leaving money on the table and get our hands tied to where now we have money we have to spend that's restricted, but we don't have anything that we can allowable uses for it. So we focus on restricted monies first, and that being one of them. Then we have the EUSD plan. Now, that was a big, the centerpiece for our adopted budget, as we talked about, you know, last year, building into this year. And that's where we took all of the, once the, the state reduced that COLA from about 4% to 1%, and then just the, the chaos that created in, in all of the districts in California, and although they say they didn't cut education funding, but we base our budgeting and planning on the future years, the, the three years, our current year and two out years, they're based on what the COLA, the state's saying, this is your revenue expectation based on that COLA. So we built all of our plans on a 4% COLA for the current year. And then we find out in January and in May that they're going to reduce that from 4 to 1, right? And so that's where we went to work and look at all the one-time monies as we're leaving COVID, and a lot of one-time monies came out during that time, is to take all that one-time money, we cleared out some of the plans we had for that, and then utilize that to transfer unrestricted general fund expenses into, and that would help us to grow our unrestricted ending fund balance. And so a lot of, and I'll have a multi-year projection here in a little bit, but that ending fund balance there, it's 32 million at the first interim, that's pretty much mostly made up of those one-time monies. Because of that cut in revenue had such a dramatic impact on our district finances. And so that's what the EUSD plan means, and it's really just a, a catch-all for utilizing all the different buckets of money that we have available to us to maintain fiscal solvency. And so it's really about movement of expenses as opposed to reducing expenses. That's what the EUSD plan really signifies in that. So now I'll go into some of that later. I'm going to circle back real quick and celebrate Patrick and his team one more time, because it's going to lead me into the next bullet here on the right side. And that's that we had in our budget as well, and some of that one-time money, we also made a lot of it into commitments, dedicating into specific things, enrollment decline, special education costs. As our special education costs have kind of had a inverse relationship to our enrollment decline, which I have a slide for later, just remember, we have a downward slope there, but an upward slope in our special education costs. So we set aside some of that one-time money to offset that continuance of that sharp increase in, in costs. But under the, the leadership of Patrick and his team and all those that are professionals that work in our special education program, I think we've actually been able to find a plateau. And in doing so, we think that some of that money we set aside for that, at this point where I stand now, now things can change as we continue through the year, it looks like we're probably not going to need that set aside as much as we thought when we adopted our budget because of the work that's happened since then. So let's talk about the federal funding. That's a hot topic in the news, isn't it? What's going to happen to the federal funding? We're getting emails from community people concerned, what is your plan? What are you going to do? Are they freezing our funds? Are they going to take it all away? So also, I'm going to show you what our federal funding is and our education programs here in a second, but first, I want to tell you, it's already come home to roost. It's happening. So there was a, we have our residency program, a teacher residency program, you know, it's grow your own, right? We're training teachers that are working with us and, and become our teachers and, and raising them up from our own community. And certainly, that's funded by the state. We have a lot of, of, of funding and grants available for the people that are in the program to help to us to do that program and for the people to participate. But then we also got involved, awarded a grant from the federal government. It's kind of a supplemental to that, and it's about $50,000 a year. We were told a couple days ago that they're rescinding that grant to us. Not going to go into the details of the why, we all watch the news, we understand what they're, what, what's going on with that, but that has already come home to affect us. Now, that was a grant money we haven't received yet, and I could imagine that that would be the first focus, is money that hasn't left the treasury yet, stop it before it does. And so we've already had an impact of federal fund freezing, cutting, program cutting, and, and that kind of thing. But, so let me show you, when it comes to federal funding, these are the, the main federal funds we receive for educational programs. You got your titles, one, two, and three there, we have our homeless grant there, the McKinney-Vento. And then the bottom one, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, that's actually, that's like the special ed funding that the federal government gives us to support our special education program. Now, it should be noted that our special education program is an annual contribution of, from our unrestricted general fund of about $13 million. And so, and then they give us 4 million too, so all in all, they're not giving us very much towards the cost of that, but they're still giving us some. And if we lost that, it would have a tremendous impact. And certainly, if things like Title I's and those things got reduced, we'd have to make an adjustment into the programs that those monies support. But an immovable object on there is our special education program. We have a legal requirement to provide the services as called for on the IEPs that our students get for the needs that they have. We can't cut back on those services. And so, and also, I put on there a column is the salaries that are associated with some of those things you can see there. And so what I, one of the first question I want to ask the board for discussion is, because we're not needing, or looking like we're going to need some of that extra money we set aside for our special education program, we would recommend to use some of that money, slide it back over to our federal, our, our restricted general fund, our federal funds live, as a set aside in case there is a reduction in our federal funds. Now, that would be a one-time set aside. It's again, just like the USD plan, all of that, it's using that money to buy us time to make the adjustments. It's not going to be enough, so what we're looking at is, we could probably put 4 million, up to $4 million set aside in a, calling it right now, a federal stability commitment of sorts. And so I wanted to hear from the board, is that, is that something that, instead of releasing that money to other purposes, just to set it aside for this new potential risk, financial risk to us if these funds are reduced in some way? So I'd like to hear from the board if you think that would be a prudent maneuver for us to do.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask, if I could start off asking a few questions before we even address that question.
Do you want me to go back?
Nope, right here, right here on the federal funding. The ECIA Title I, what does ECIA stand for?
Kathleen?
Anybody?
That's rude.
I've never seen it. It's EIA. Is that Educational Improvement Act? It, or one of the answers? Yeah, okay.
No, not answers.
It's Title I. It's, 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 okay, okay. So I, I apologize, that was an unfair question, I've just never seen that, so I was wondering
We don't call it that, we just call it Title I.
Okay. So tho, those funds, what are those funds currently used for? Title I only?
Go ahead. To the penny.
Yep.
Most of our sites, or the Title I sites receive funding. Then that creates a side, the district-wide services out of that. Or Gillingham is going to be out of that, some consultants, Kathleen will, on your side? Okay. The site.
So it's, it's those supplemental activities to improve the, the student's education, particularly for students that fall in the socio-economically disadvantaged range?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically, yes. Sites use it, most of our customers, there's also a set up for intervention teachers.
Okay. So that would, that would be, have a tremendous impact on the quality of education that our most needy students receive? Can I, can I just ask a question about the Title III immigrant student, that's migrant ed? Are those direct services that our district is providing, or are those going through the county's migrant education program?
Kathleen, can you come to the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
No, it's great.
I've got some questions for you.
Sorry. Migrant ed is a separate funding source, and we actually contact with SDCOE to provide the, the migrant services. The Title III immigrant is funding that's based on a threshold of getting an increased amount of immigrants. If our immigrant population increases by 10% in a given year, we receive that funding. So we've been receiving it for the past, but before that, we hadn't received it for a long time. Not sure if we're going to have it next year. So that money goes to our newcomers support, our parent, several professional that work directly, providing support to kids.
Okay. We do have a text from a rather large audience tonight, that the mics appear to be coming in and out, so we'll be careful at the, at the podium and all, but I'm not sure. Okay, so can I ask a question? Any other questions?
So my understanding is, my fear is, because there's talk of the education department, instead of giving specific amounts, taking and giving, making it a block grant to the states, not the state's administration, but in the state, whenever something comes from the state level, there are always strings and paperwork attached, so it could end up being more costly than it is right now, more time-consuming.
Although the feds, there's a lot of strings attached to the, given these monies.
So the IDEA money, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's federal money that comes to with a lot of regulations, correct?
Yes.
And so a question, I'm not sure who this question is going to, but if the federal government stops funding that, do the regulations also go away?
I'd imagine not, that's not how it's happened in the past.
That's never going to happen.
And in fact, many of our mandates of things we are required to carry out and do by law are not funded. And so it would not be surprising to me if the funding were reduced, but the regulations were not reduced.
Because this is a federal law. I mean, IDEA, I mean, what we're required to do is provide special education services is federal.
But also, the regulations that we're doing is protecting those services we're providing to those students that have those, you know, significant needs in many cases as well. And so even if the regulations were to be loosened, I don't know, we want to make a decision to reduce the services that are needed by those students.
Absolutely agreed. Okay. Other questions?
Just maybe some clarification. So with the proposal you mentioned about moving the $4 million from, I think you said special education or the surplus there.
A one-time of money special education set aside.
Right.
To use some of that to help us to build a, a set aside for this particular.
So if, so if nothing changed, we're essentially just giving ourselves another year to make what would be very difficult decisions. Not that that's not a bad solution, I just want to make sure that's essentially what we're, we're talking about. Or natural attrition, or perhaps different policy change that would mitigate some of that.
And of course, of course, salaries, if some of those programs have to be reduced, it's not something we want to do, but we might be forced to. But also to protect our special education program, it's also a $4 million federal revenue there as well. And so we have a situation to stand before you and start talking about those tough decisions. But we also wanted to be ready to give us time to have those discussions.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. That answers my questions.
So, but, so is the salaries for the individuals with disabilities on a different area?
So we have, so all of our special education salaries, we don't charge any of them there because if we do that, some of those services we wouldn't be able to get reimbursed for on that other thing I talked about in Medi-Cal. So if we were to charge salaries for some of those people, we couldn't then get reimbursed for that in the other program. So we use this for like non-public school, things like that. What else? Sorry, non-public school.
Yes.
Yes, that we wouldn't qualify for reimbursements for. So that way we protect our ability to maximize our reimbursements. So that's why there's not salaries on that particular line.
I mean, I like the idea of, I mean, we could all speculate what's going to happen, but you know, it's going to always change every day. So I mean, I, I like the idea of giving us time and setting aside an amount so we can keep up with the services as long as we have the funds and have time to pivot when, when decisions are actually being made that are completely out of our control, that kind of gives us the time and the control back to make changes.
I would add, it's just, and I presume that you would take it from this lens, that if we went through with this process and then throughout the course of the next year, opportunities to kind of adjust, whether through attrition or other things that are triggered, that we take advantage of, you know, not just trying to spend it out, but okay, let's save this so we can use it in a way that's more nutritious in the long term.
So that's what I talked about on the, one of the first slides, too, in the vacancies and reorganization, that constant evaluation of what are our needs, what are our resources and the form of positions, and making sure that we're, we're keeping ourselves right-sized to, our positions match our need. And especially right now, as we go through this era of stabilizing our budget post-COVID, that's the name of the game, exactly. But doing that through the lens of protecting that blue circle, the people. So that's kind of the concept that we want to advocate for in how we manage our budget. There are questions or anything on, on, on that?
So I think you're looking for some guidance, and I, I would just like to say, I'm in, I'm in favor just exactly as Mr. Olson has stated, as long as we are looking for maximum efficiency.
Yep.
And really looking at every one of these expenditures, knowing something's got to be cut.
Yeah.
Which one is going to least impact kids?
Okay. So I'm going to move us past this. And so this is an early, early preview of our second interim. Now, in the next board meeting, I'll be up here again, doing a second interim presentation. And that's the actual board meeting where there will be a vote, who will be recommending the adoption of an update, a revision to our adopted budget. That's called a second interim. But for now, this is more or less that first box there, that's the second interim as it is. There's going to be some minor adjustments before March 6th, but this is primarily what you'll see on March 6th there. We added a fourth year, because we're talking here and building towards the adopted budget. Now, when we get to the adopted budget, that current fourth year becomes the third year of our year projection. And that's that year that, you know, we use to determine our fiscal solvency and planning forward. That 4.6 million is still up there, that is still accounted for and reduce the expenses by that amount. And that's a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight, is how we are going to get there. But then, we're not talking about '26, '27, or '27, '28. And so there was a 3.3 there, we removed it for the purpose of this discussion. So if we were to get to the 4.6 for the next year's adopted budget, but did no other reductions to our general, unrestricted general fund expenses, then our ending fund balance in what will become our third year in our adopted budget is in the red box. Red box is bad, below the minimum reserve, insolvent, to the tune of $3.5 million. And so that's why we're talking to you tonight, because we've got to get that red box to green. And we have a plan. And also, I show you down there, this is how it would look. Boom, that works. Four million, that's the federal budget set aside that we were just talking about there. So that's how it would show up. You see where the sped one was here and not here, and now it's the four. And so we're pulling some of that and another million from our EUSD plan, you know, what type of set aside to make that 4 million. Okay? Any questions on this before I move on?
Oh, I was, sorry, I was just going to say that I do want to commend Patrick and his department, because if he's able to stabilize the sped budget, that's really helpful. But no, that's, that's actually a great help, I think, to our overall bottom line, but still providing the services that our students need.
All right. Okay, so now I want to talk, let's talk about, I skipped a slide, or I missed a slide. There it is. I'm going to go backwards, we're going to go forward and we're going to go backwards. We were moving slides around to make sure that they were not misplaced a couple here. So first, let's set the stage here now on kind of current facts, current state of the district, if you will. You saw the financials, some of, a lot of what drives that, right, is our enrollment, and of course, our attendance, and we're going to get into that here in a minute. But I've been showing more of a condensed version just the last few years of this, but I wanted to show, let's go back to 2008, and just show the steady decline of our enrollment in this district from over 18,000 now to just over 13,000 that we project to be at in the '26, '27 year. And so that's obviously something that we have to adjust for, and that causes a lot of decisions that we're, we're having to make, and it certainly has a downward impact on our revenue potentials, right? See, I just put a couple of notes in there that a prep, Epiphany Prep School, a charter school opened up there in the '16, '17 year, you can see, decline continued to happen there. But then Epiphany Prep closed, we had a little bit of a bump up, we got a couple hundred of those students did join our district, but the tidal wave of this overall trend for years of decline, you know, overwhelmed that, and then the decline continued to start working its way down. I have to go back to get to the last slide. Okay, so Ms. Kegel here put together this slide to kind of talk about the impact of enrollment decline, our attendance situation, and COLAS, and how the effect, what effect they have on our, our budget and across our years of our multi-year projections. You want to walk us through this?
So this slide represents the financial impact of the three years. It's comparing our first and our second interim. The overall reduction to our revenue is $8.5 million. The factors that play into this is the reduction of COLA in the '25, '26 school year of half a percent. And with the current state of affairs, we've decided to redo the by an additional amount in the two out-years opposed to where we had it at first interim. We also think we look at where we have our ADA rate. Natalie and her team, the principal, everybody at the site is doing an excellent job in bringing higher attendance. Unfortunately, the rate of growth has participated. The good news is that the 106 days that we've had, only 20 days have been less of an ADA rate than the same time last year. So there is improvement. At adopted, we were at 94% across the board for all three years, down to 92% in 2025. The potential is there to have an increase. Next year, there is a new program for attendance recovery. It offers a lot of flexibility. We're now going to be able to do that through the before-school, after-school, and on Saturdays. I know Rick is already working on implementing a program for that. I mentioned that the reduction was 8.5 between first interim and second interim. The overall reduction since adopted was $11 million. Now, how to balance our budget based off of this information?
Sorry, I was, what's the 11?
The revenue reduction from adopted to second interim. From first to second was 8.5. We started showing that reduction at first interim.
Okay. And then, but you said, so now, is that a finalized program where we can start recovering the ADA rate? It's starting, is that right next to it?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Fantastic.
Is that both ACES and ELOP, or one or the other?
We can use our, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
We'll be able to utilize ELOP. And that's, before that, we weren't going to be able to use it. We were going to have to use unrestricted fund to be able to recoup ADA, but now we're able to use ELOP.
But not ACES?
It's specifically set ELOP.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So in that impact, and remember that number, that from adopted budget, the second, I still have. From adopted budget to second interim, it's an $11 million reduction in our revenue. So I want to remember that number, and show you what the, what that means to us later on, as far as if that weren't the case. All right. So now let's talk about some of our plans. It's like I said, some of it's reductions of expenses, some of it's movement of expenses out of our unrestricted general fund into other available funding sources. So earlier today, I know Dr. Moore and, and Audrey met with our, our Wheel program teachers and discussed that, well, we have Proposition 28, our music and arts money, that we've been using to fund part of the wheel, or about half of the wheel, that's going to be continuing. But because we need to reduce our expenses in our unrestricted general fund, one of the recommendations or proposed reduction is to reduce the unrestricted general fund portion of the wheel. And that, that would be about $1.3 million in an unrestricted general fund reduction. The classified vacancies right now that we have, that I talked about a little bit earlier, totaled to about half a million dollars at this point. The contract reductions that we've identified for consultant agreements and such, that we're no longer need at this point, 120,000 hotspots. And so this is something where we've had a lot of hotspots available for our students, and we've maintained about 3,000 of them or so. Right now, currently, if we were to only have the hotspots that are currently in use, it's about $150,000 a year currently. It's budgeted for 300. And so we're also working with T-Mobile and Cox. They have low-cost or no-cost internet that's available for the whole home, and we're working with our family liaisons and helping all of our, our families. And at this point, for the T-Mobile program, for that free internet, all of our families are qualified for that. We have letters for them that we've given to our family liaisons, so that we can help them through the process to get not a hotspot from us, but home internet through T-Mobile for free. And as we work through that, the intent obviously is to even bring down the need for hotspots even further. So they'll still have access to the internet, they'll still be able to do their schoolwork at home with those programs, but not at a cost to the district to do that. And enrollment decline as we talk, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Olson.
I'm just curious, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, but maybe, do, do we know the ones that are actually being checked out, are they actually being used? Like, can we, like, roll the gigs that?
Yeah, the letter can talk to it.
So.
I'll drink some water.
Yeah, we, we just recently conducted a review and made sure that we're only active, only those hotspots that are actively being used are, are still turned on. The rest we deactivated, and then we tried to move them from the school. So we have them here at the district office now.
And of the ones that are actively being used, like, do we, do we get a report on how much traction they're getting throughout the day? And, and my concern is if they're getting used throughout the middle of the day when the kids are in school, are we really trying, like, what are we doing? So, I mean, I get, we're trying to provide access, but as you rightly pointed out, there's a lot of services out there. So I don't know if the reports come in at that level of detail, but it would just be curious to kind of, you know, who we're trying to provide access to is actually getting at the end of the road to that person that we're trying to get it there. So just, or if it's being used at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning, hopefully that's not our students. Yeah, I think they're turned off now. So just, it'd be interesting to see that level of report, and I don't, I'm just raising those questions, because I do think that tells us what, we're trying to cut costs.
Yeah.
And if half of the ones that are actually being used are actually being used for the intended purpose, that's additional cost.
Certainly, if the student doesn't have internet at home to use for schoolwork, the family doesn't likely have the internet to use as well. And so there could be a likelihood that some of them are using some of the hotspot internet for, for other uses, and that's why we wanted to.
Which is fine.
Connect them to programs to where it's intended for the whole house to use for that, and again, at no cost to the district. But if they can't get that program, or it doesn't work for them, they still need a hotspot for that student, we're still going to have some for them to be able to have that, so we can guarantee them access to their schoolwork, if that's what they need.
But I would agree with Mr. Olson, that should be an extremely small number.
That's what we're.
Probably not $150,000 worth, because we're not in a rural area, our families can get one of those other services. They may just need that extra, push that extra assistance.
And that's what we're providing, exactly that. We put together the package of information they need to share with the companies that provide that, so we can, we can walk them through the process and help them through our family liaisons to get access to that home internet at, at no cost.
Yeah, even the funding letter. Like, there, there's everything provided for them, it's just now the, that outreach for the families.
I'm assuming I don't have the answer to this, but we, I know we turn the, we're turning the iPad access off in the evening time now, but the hotspot remains active for the household.
The hotspot remains active for the household, yes, but for our iPads, they cannot enter that at the time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So yes, to your point, if the hotspot's still showing usage after, after 9 o'clock, we would assume that it's not the iPad.
Yeah, and, and that may not necessarily be a bad thing. We want our families to have access to it, but I think it's just drilling into the data of like, hey, if, you know, it's from 10 o'clock to 1 AM every single day, this is when the, the pull's coming. You know, perhaps another service is more appropriate for that household.
That's right.
But a lot of the access to the internet blocked, restricted, so it's not like they could go to a streaming service or anything of that sort.
Those people are smart, though. Thank you for answering those questions.
That's right, they came through our schools, of course, they're smart.
That's right.
So, good on the hotspots. The next thing on there was FTEs. We're talking about 10-certificated FTEs, that's why I showed you that enrollment decline chart, that we're constantly having to adjust our staffing levels based on the number of students that we have, right? And so at this point, we're estimating a reduction of about 10 of our certificated staff like specifically. Okay, what does that mean? I, one of those FTEs, we already have more retirements registered with us than that number. That number's going to continue to grow. We'll talk about even some of the other things from the wheel to that. So at this point, we're not, this year, we're not recommending any reduction in workforce. Like I said, we're protecting that blue circle, okay? And attrition is absolutely the, us to protect that blue circle, but we also have declining enrollment in our district.
What's our anticipated enrollment decline? Do we actually have a hard anticipated number for next year?
Total number, because we just did the routine first and.
But a lot of the access to the internet blocked, restricted. So it's not like they could go to a streaming service or anything of that sort.
Those people are smart, though. Thank you for answering those questions.
That's right, they came through our schools, of course, they're smart.
That's right.
So good on the hotspots. The next thing on there was FTEs. We're talking about ten certificated FTEs. That's why I showed you that enrollment decline chart that we're constantly having to adjust our staffing levels based on the number of students that we have, right? And so at this point, we're estimating a reduction of about ten of our certificated staff. Like specifically. Okay, what does that mean? I'm one of those FTEs. We already have more retirements registered with us than that number. That number's going to continue to grow. Talk about even some of the other things from the wheel to that. So at this point, we're not recommend, this year, we're not recommending any reduction in workforce. Like I said, we're protecting that blue circle. Okay, and attrition is absolutely the, us to protect that blue circle, but we also have declining enrollment in our district.
What's our anticipated enrollment decline? Do we actually have a hard anticipated number for next year?
Total number, because we just did the fourteen first and second on that slide. Yeah.
That's adequate.
Second interim, we'll, we'll have the actual number that's baked into the budget.
So we're anticipating twenty-seven to thirty per certificated, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McGuire, looking at your momentum to call. I, I think that a very interesting additional column where you have the year, the enrollment and notes, an additional interesting column that I'm not asking you to do right now, but would be our total number of certificated staff, our total number of teachers by year.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we have that, we just need to include it on this at this time. But yeah, we have that information.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it's only relevant so that we can see, and Ms. Harper brings up the good point, maybe total classified staff, total certificated staff. And, you know, and understanding that if we have close to the same staffing levels, that's not necessarily a bad thing if we can afford it. It's just we're providing more adults per student and certainly and a number of instructional aides, which is a good thing.
Yes.
It would just be some, another data point that would be interesting.
Within our available resources, we want to maximize that to get as many good people in with our kids to help working through the educational process. And when you see that data, actually, you're going to see that it doesn't align. There's a bit of a bump in that staffing because during COVID, when we staffed up to keep our class sizes low, like during the hybrid year and continued that for a couple more years, it'll look a little off kilter because of that, an artificial increase in that, because we had available funding through the COVID funds that allowed us to do that. So when we can, we do. Right now, we're in a situation where we'd have to get really close to, you know, what our available resources are, are smaller. And so we have to tighten up our staffing to, to what our need is, as we talked about with supplies, people and everything that we do. Anything else on the enrollment decline slash staffing before I move on to the next section?
Are we still?
We are on this page.
So regarding the contracted services?
Yes.
You, you don't say specifically which ones you, you decided that would be eliminated. Could we see a list of the contracted services?
Yeah, we just summarized it for the slide. But we do have, we do exactly which of those contracted services, do you want? Yeah, we want to, we can, we can list some of them off now.
Know what all of our contracted services are and which one, I mean, because obviously, you went through it line by line.
Yeah. Oh, we can provide that list to you.
We might have some suggestions too.
I'm sure you do. That's what you're here for. We'll put that in the update. I think we can. We can probably get that into the update. Okay, I'm going to try to go to the next column here. Are we ready? ELOP plan, things about, okay, Ms. Harper, go ahead.
What do you think our total in contracts are? Ballpark.
It's going to be three to five overall contracted services. That's going to include like transportation. Horton Killingham.
Consultants.
Consultants, yes, all of that.
Some maintenance.
Yes, it will include some maintenance.
Okay. Anything else?
Not till you start talking.
Of course. Hey, yeah, I saw that. This is the section here where we talk about not necessarily reductions in what we're doing, but movement of those expenses into other available resources. And so the first thing on there, the relocatable purchase. And, and that's something that we're talking about within our RDA money. And I have a slide for that will go into just a little bit more detail, but we're currently renting some of portable kind of building, bathroom buildings, even classroom buildings, a few of those. And so we're using some of this money that we have outside of our general fund to buy those outright. So we can eliminate those, the annual cost for these buildings that we're still needing. But we don't need to keep paying rent on them if we have available funding to buy that out. So that's what that means. Future iPad leases, we have a new lease that's coming online to refresh some of our iPads specifically for our younger kids. And that, that lease, we're looking at using our RDA funds to start to pay that specific lease. We're not going to be able to pay all of our leases with that funding source, but to pay that lease, the annual cost for that one. Now, that's a four zero interest lease, so it's just splitting up the cost. Our money. Right, but still have the items and transferring that expense out of the unrestricted general fund into our redevelopment agency's money. The next bullet is, and, and Mrs. Kegel's going to talk a lot about our LCAP here in a minute, and the financial aspects of that. But we had some room in our one-time carryovers, monies that weren't spent that were budgeted for last year within LCAP and our supplemental concentration dollars. So when it carries over, it's, it's really essentially a one-time money. And so we want to use one-time monies for things instead of people, right? Because people are going to be here longer than the one time, than the one year. And so something that we have an opportunity to do is not only like we're shifting the cost of a new lease over to the RDA, but is to use some of that carryover to pay down two of our existing leases that we already have. And what that does is it eliminates the future payments of those leases for the next couple of years. And that provides a two point one dollars across the next two years of savings to the unrestricted general fund. And we're a collaborative contract. And we've talked a lot about our redesign process, and that's what that supports in our Mackenzie Scott money. But remember, I talked about educator effectiveness and more specifically our restricted resources and how we should use those first. There's that time component on the educator effectiveness. This work is really professional development centered. And so we want to use educator effectiveness first to pay for this in the next year or even in the current year. Current year. And then, once we get that educator effectiveness, once we've spent that down in a variety of ways for professional development, then that cost, if it continues, could be Scott money, which is unrestricted. So you just want to spend the restricted money first, restricted by what's allowed or by time. In this case, both for educator effectiveness and then do we save that for another day? That gives us the ability to minimize our costs in our unrestricted general fund. Okay.
Say it, okay, because I know I'm not the biggest fan of LCC. So I thought we were like in the seventy thousand dollar range for LCC and what they were doing for us. And I find my numbers incorrect, but I don't remember.
So part of that cost or the extra hours, like the substitutes that we need to provide, we have the all-day trainings that happen here as they do that work. Working with the LCC. Here's, as part of that cost, it's not the full of the cost that, the full three hundred there, it's not the contract cost in entirety. Some of that is the, the staff time that we have to, the subs we have to provide to have those trainings.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, we're. I mean, I know. How to keep, I, I, I. I'd never liked this contract, sorry, I don't know about this because it's just.
I, I think Ms. Harper is correct. We need to look at everything with a critical eye. I, I certainly think that the extra hours to make sure that we continue with our redesign process is valuable. I was at North Broadway Elementary School today, just a real momentum of positive change and positivity among, among staff and students because of the redesign, because of this ranch concept. And so I think there's real value there. The question is, is that something we can continue internally? And I think we always need to be considering that. How much of this needs to be contracted out? And how much could we continue effectively internally? So Ms. Harper, I think, I think your, your point is well taken. And I think Mr. McGuire is always looking at ways to streamline and make more efficient our entire operation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There's a lot of different ways to get to where we need to go, and that's always what we're looking at. Okay. So the next slide is going to have a much, I want to have a much more further discussion on, and it's another means of reducing our unrestricted general fund expenses. And so I'm just going to get into it. Our Limitless Learning Academy, now this is a school that came online during COVID. Many districts open schools like this during response to some of those challenges in a more virtual environment. First started, we started off with three hundred and sixty kids, but as the years have progressed, the need that led to people enrolling at this school have obviously declined, given the enrollment has been declining over the last several years. And then even next year, projecting and even another decline into that, bringing us below a hundred students at that school. Now, of course, this is only on the screen and in this presentation because we're in a situation where we need to reduce our expenses or unrestricted general fund. This slide's not here because of the work that's happening at that school. We met with those staff today, Dr. Abara, myself, met with that staff today and talked about this idea here. And the idea is of closing the Limitless Learning Academy and heard the feedback from them and heard them voice some of the, the needs that those students have. And certainly, that's not lost on us. And there's other ways, like I said, for us to meet those needs. And so one of the things, we're in the early stages of exploring this. Budgetarily, there's a one point four million dollars in cost for having that as a school. But that doesn't mean that we can't meet those needs in some other way. And so like we have our home education program. Could we expand that in some way? Our independent study program, some other means that are within our available resources to still meet the needs of those students that have the needs that would lead them to be at a school like this. And so we're in early stages of that, but that's a discussion I wanted to have here too. We've been having that conversation. I want to hear from the four of you. What are your thoughts on that? And again, with the idea that the recommended action here, and it's not taking an action tonight, we're not in a vote tonight. There's a process for that. It goes across two board meetings, with one republic hearing and one with a vote. Tonight's just a conversation. And the conversation centers right now around how do we meet the needs of those students that have the needs that would lead them to limitless within our available resources? While also providing that reduction of our unrestricted general fund expenses, so it's within our available needs.
And so I will, I know everybody will have comments. I have a simple comment, which is this could easily be made into a school within a school. And certainly staffing needs to simply reflect the current enrollment. And so under one administration, this could be just an additional with ninety-one students, potentially three or four classrooms. And no, they, the. Just like we were moving, i- if they were going to another school, they'd be at that same level. And so, but we could continue the concept as a school within a school very easily. And that would seem very reasonable. Mr. Olson.
I was essentially going to say the same thing. It seems like we can, I'd be curious to know what the grades are of the individual students. Is it more weighted towards two, three, four, or is it more, more on the high end?
Yeah.
So.
More so at the middle school level.
Right, so I mean, I think using the data and as Mr. Paulson suggested, I think the design needs, the value of the students can be satisfied at a much more efficient rate within the existing structure. I think it sounds like those conversations have already taken place. My guess is you'll find pretty similar comments by my board of colleagues.
Let's see. Miss Carter?
So I've always thought that it was somewhat, somewhat similar to our home education program. In any case, I think the fact that it's more middle school students, a lot of them suffer from a social anxiety, I think. And I've been to promotion ceremonies and I've seen the students. And I think it is a beneficial program. But again, talking about maybe consolidating the two programs, home education and, and limitless.
Yes.
Even on the campus, right now, home ed is at.
Actually, home ed has actually been relocated. It resides, that teacher and her staff reside at limitless.
So then maybe it should be, because I was going to ask about how that home ed program is doing, what their, their student population is. Twelve students.
Twelve students, yeah.
So, yeah, would seem.
Now, that program is really where the, the caregivers for the students are the ones delivering that education there with the support of the teacher that, that works in that. Whereas limitless, we have our teachers providing a lot of that instructions. That's kind of the difference between the two of it. But yeah, we got to figure out a way where we can still meet those needs.
Could be a hybrid.
And, and talking with the staff, and we are going to be speaking with the families coming up about this. I mean, this is not something that we take lightly here. We don't want to remove the supports that some of our students need, but we also are up against that hard, you know, rocking a hard place there where the resources we have available to us are shrinking.
But that's where it comes, the rubber meets the road when we talk about a personalized education, because some of those students really have some needs.
Absolutely, and I've enjoyed that promotion with you for a couple of years. Ms. Harper?
Yeah, I was going to say, because I mean, the, the teachers and staff there do a tremendous job. But I think we could modify it to really be in what we can afford and what our students need. But have a hybrid option or something like that, or combine it with home ed, you know, education. I'm sure you guys will come up with something, but I, I don't think it needs to be a standalone school site. I, I, and also, I just don't think that's fair to have all of those resources for ninety-one students while they're hurting as a district wide as well.
A technical aspect of this, right now, it has a California Department of Education school code. It's a school with, if it's a program versus a school, there's more flexibility in different funds that can be used to support some of those things too. So that's one aspect of our discussions about what we can do with it to, to do something. But maybe even bringing in the ability, the flexibility of other ways to fund some portions of this to provide those supports.
Well, and with technology, you know, option that we should offer to students that, you know, they can study from home with technology the way we have it. But again, you're right, I don't think it should be a standalone site or funding situation.
And so technically, we can just give up the CDS code. Put it into a separate school. I think the important thing is that those teachers have done an excellent job of branding LLA. And they've done a great job of, of engendering a spirit. And I think what we're probably interested in is continuing that spirit. But that spirit can be part of another campus. And they can maintain as a school within a school or something like that, that some autonomy while also getting all the benefits of, you know, maybe some of the kids want to play sports, want to do other things that are available at the school, participate in ELOP programs, ACES programs. And so I think this could, as long as we maintain this idea that we have a program that can be individualized for students where they can do it at home or partially at home and partially on a school side. I think maintaining the spirit of what they've developed there is the important thing. And I don't think we need to give that up. I think it can be accomplished.
That's what we're working on, figuring out how to accomplish that right now.
So, I'll tell you, the, the teachers are very creative and they're committed to, and we spoke to them, they said they would love to help us figure that out.
So I, I thought we already have a sort of a school within a school. They share a principal, it's on the same campus, they can participate, can they not?
There's no reason why they couldn't.
Yeah, so.
But with that school code, it ties our hands in kind of how we can, you know, fund some of that in, in, in just in general too, obviously with the need as far as enrollment.
It's basically the funding.
Funding is why it's on the slide, not the work that they're doing. They're doing amazing work over there. They've figured out how to do this and do this well. I wish that we had them as all, you know, what they've learned in the last few years, going next school together. Every district in the world had that when we started COVID, when that just got happened to us overnight. But they used that experience and they've developed something now that actually worked. But they used that experience and they've developed something now that actually works.
Well, those teachers are very, very special at that school. They, and it is truly an individualized educational program. It's what we would wish for every student if we could. So I'd hate to see that, because you may well lose those 91 students if, if you decide to scrap the program. So you can add that to your enrollment decline projections if you do.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's looking to kill the program. I think we need to kill the CDS code.
Make it from a school to a program.
And really, we can continue to call it Limitless Learning Academy. We can continue it in the same location unless we're trying to get rid of those portables. We don't have to change anything.
Except the designation.
Except the designation. That's right. I mean, but we can still call it Limitless Learning Academy. It just happens to be on the campus of Del Dios Middle School. The staffing ratios, I, we understand that's going to need to reflect enrollment and not the fact that this is a separate school.
And there is a need for so many of those portables because of a whole other purpose, because of the building of the buildings at Del Dios. Those were slated to be removed. Laying back the state, well, this account before last year, kind of having a waiver for that. So yeah, and for me, those portables to go to other campuses to build their capacities as some of our other schools starting this summer or so. Okay. So we'll continue this conversation. We're going to continue our work and planning. We're going to continue to seek input from family, staff and others. And thank you for your guys' input here tonight on this, the toughest of all these slides. Thank you. So I talked about RDA, the redevelopment funds. So I mentioned that we've been tapering off the contribution of those into our unrestricted general fund because they will be expired in 2033. But just tapering them off, but also because they are expired, kind of treating them as a semi, as somewhat of a one-time resource. So we want to bring expenses as part of the EOSD plan concept out of our unrestricted general fund and into these funds. And so some of the things that, one, obviously we've already completed most of the work in our courtyard project here. And, you know, and the purpose for that is for us to be able to host events here instead of paying for other facilities, right? So I can see in the future band concerts and other things like that that we can do, employee get togethers, that kind of a thing that we can host out here in our courtyard now, that we've rebuilt it that way. And of course, in honor of Kathy Shirley, who does such great work here for, for so long as a lifelong Skandita resident and career here in, in our district. And so we will be having an event right now, looking in May, an honorary dedication at the courtyard to Mrs. Shirley. Her family will be here and many of her friends and colleagues that she worked with throughout her life for that. But that's something that we're paying for out of our RDA money right now. Like I talked about, there's restroom buildings, some portable classrooms like we have over our Lincoln. The annex, we call it. It's like kind of attached to Lincoln, but off to, on the side of Lincoln over there where the preschool offices are. Renting those, buying that and then not having to keep paying rent on there. Like one of them is occupied by our partner Vista Hill. And so that way we're not paying rent on something that we don't have to, because we'll have available funds to buy that down. Also, something else that we're looking at is, is what monies that we have that we can use to do things that we might normally do through a bond program. But as those bonds funds are being spent down, before we try to ask for anything else, we want to make sure that we're maximizing our use of the available funds we have. And we have a need. We have some very old playgrounds, especially at these three schools. And so we have a project going now is to kind of take those down to the, to the studs, if you will, bring in new parts and, and replace most all of that playground above the ground at these schools. And so they have, you know, new modern equipment at, at these schools using this money. Like I talked about earlier as well, just skipping right ahead here to the iPad leases paying the, the new lease. We're going to be using the RDA money to pay that annually over the next four years on that. We're also at a point leaving the Apple world where all of our desktop, our desk, you know, clerical staff, office staff, those kind of folks. Windows in, in, in that environment. And the Windows, last time we did this and bought those was, I think, almost seven years ago. And they're, they're reaching that end of supported life. So their operating system, that is no longer going to be supported. And at that point, they become a hazard to our network security. And so we need to spend some money to refresh those, to replace those with ones that'll have four years ahead of them till they don't become a hole in our network. As you know, that's a problem out there. It's happening nearby and far away. We want to make sure we maintain the highest level of network security with Leonard and his team. And so far, so good. Not going to encourage anybody to try, but so far, so good. Also, along with our, our network infrastructure, we put a lot through it, right? A lot of computers are out there as we continuously have to keep up with refreshing our servers as they start to end near end of life as well. And so there's a need right now and use RDA money to do that. Where in the past, we would have used unrestricted general fund money. That way we protect the unrestricted general fund utilizing this money to, to cover that need. And then lastly on this, kind of a new topic, as I believe we updated the board last week, we have kind of a growing problem with the roof over at RingCon. This last rain, it became more than just a small problem. My cough drop got stuck there. Where the rain was now coming inside the building in a large amount. And so we have, right now, we have some teachers that are not in their normal classroom. We have a company out there, ServPro, is doing the, where, you know, where they took all the walls out, get rid of all the water damage, you know, and mitigating any of that damage there and making repairs to those classrooms because of the roof leak. And then we're all in the process that, starting next week, we're going to get in there and start taking that roof. Now, the roof itself, it's over eight classrooms. We're not going to have to relocate everybody. We're talking with the staff tomorrow, their principal, about what's coming. There's going to be a little noise, but the kind of material we use, it's not like we're putting tar on the roof and that kind of thing. But to be able to take off the top layer of that roof that's causing the leaks, there's, there's more of a solid metal surface underneath that. So the roof's not going to be completely open to the, to the sky. And then be able to lay that, it's a membrane roof back on top of that. We got to get that done before it rains again, or we undo all the mitigation work that we're doing right now in those classrooms to repair the water damage from the last rain. So that's about a $350,000 cost to the, the repair work and then the roof replacement on that building. And so instead of letting that hit our unrestricted general fund, using our redevelopment money to pay for the costs of that repair. And that's a good point too, for what that money is for. It's intended for facilities types thing originally. And it's for us, it's kind of that emergency backup, something unexpected, like what happened at RingCon happens. You know, have that money set aside that we could use, that we're not having to continue to drive down our income fund balance to repair things that have to get done. Okay.
So if I could just make a comment, you've got a lot of facilities, situations here. And I just want to remind everybody of a pending issue, L R Green, that the entire campus is at or beyond its lifespan. And at the point that the entire campus of the portables, which is basically the entire campus, are suddenly all simultaneously melting down. That's not an emergent, I mean, it is an emergency, but it's not a surprising emergency. Cause I think we talked about this a couple of years ago, correct? So I just want us to remember that we've got some aging facilities and we've done a wonderful job on many of our aged facilities.
Absolutely.
But we've still got some, some very big issues that need to be dealt with.
When our needs or for facilities needs go beyond what are, what we can continue to maintain with our maintenance department, of course, those are things that we're going to have to do something much more substantial with at, at that school specifically. But that's a conversation for a future board meeting about other ways to raise revenue in order to address those kinds of needs. So I won't go into that right now. Okay. Any other questions on this slide?
Just about the, and I, and I, I'm in agreement. That's a good use of the funds because it's one-time expenditures for things that are necessary and it would improve the district. But where does unrestricted maintenance fund, or is that not enough to cover some of these needs?
Here, I'm going to bring up, Ms. Kegler, she's going to answer that question and she's going to take the next few slides for you too. So let me have her talk about the routine restricted maintenance and the deferred maintenance accounts, like what that, what those monies go to us.
The restricted maintenance is our restricted, we have the 3% of our total expenditures. The bulk of that money is just to pay for the salary and the maintenance on our facilities. There's not enough money there to be able to do large capital projects with. The first, the first maintenance gets $99,000 a year. And that's to do the paint for sites, asphalt, carpeting, those types, just to be able to keep up with our annual needs.
But again, I would think that a roof, roof repair replacement would fall into that category as well as large.
It would fall into that category. We just don't have that much available funds and that resource to be able to afford that.
The one roof at RingCon, just one of the buildings, it's eight classrooms. That's a $300,000 replacement cost. And if the $900,000 deferred maintenance a year, we're talking three buildings roofs with that. So that's why we have to try to find other revenue sources in order for us to do that. That's what our D E comes to spend.
Okay. So now I'll discuss the mid-year LCAP review. In the last board, you got to see the data aspect of it. And that will be discussing the financial aspect of it. Our LCAP is inclusive of all federal funds, state funds, and I feel that supplemental concentration funds. I assume we're anticipating that our USC plan money will be fully expended and closed, we actually had a carryover. And so we decided to incorporate the USC plan into the LCAP. And the next slides will show you what we did with that. For LCAP goal one, there was no significant changes as to how we adopted to where we think we're going to be ending. The change that you do see is that the budgeting cycle as to where the people in the positions and actual needs of those action items, where you will start to stretch through the end of the year. And partly with the social workers and the counselors. At the time of adoption, we were funding those positions with our supplemental concentration funds. Since we had a carryover of our any USD plan funds, we're able to move those costs from our unrestricted one to our restricted one, bring up money to be able to do one-time purchases with. You'll see that in goal number three. Our significant change went for the Apple leases. Andy took a lot of my thunder in being able to explain what we were doing with that. So just to reiterate, we took the lease payments that we were going to have for the next two fiscal years, which equated to $2 million. We're using the one-time money that we freed up by being able to move our social workers and counselor costs out of our unrestricted, or out of our unrestricted funding sources to our restricted funding sources. This also allows us to be able to reduce that $2 million. Another concern is that the period from three months moderate into the LCAP that cost was previously just out of our money. We're covering some of our concentration, that service that is provided falls into category of our goal three with the safety of our, that has been invaluable in the last weeks. And we see a huge decrease in vandalism, which is saving us money. Now, Andy, I'll go over how all of this work plays into our second interim multi-year projection.
Any questions on any of that before I move on? Do you want us to take some time to look it over? I'll move on. We will come back to it. Okay. Everything that we presented to you tonight. So I should show you where, where the first interim, where our second interim, the climate kind of work we stand. Now, in actuality, this is what really would be in, really the, the, or most close to what our second interim would be incorporating all the cost reductions and cost movements that we presented tonight. All of those actually total up, not 4.6, but to 6 million. So that's a $6 million reduction in our unrestricted general fund expenses. Didn't have as a big impact as it could have, because we also remember had a reduction in revenue because of our enrollment and specifically our attendance rate. But you can see that, looking at what's the least amount of reductions that we can do and still hit that minimum reserve plus 5 million kind of threshold. That's where we put in there, projecting to do another one and a half million cuts in the next 26, 27, and the 27, 28 years as we stand now. And that gets us to that box from going from red to green and just below $17 million. One thing I wanted to point out, take that $11 million impact that that ADA had on us, the reduction in revenue from adopted to now. We could adopt a budget that had a $3 million surplus instead of a deficit. Our biggest challenge right now, we, we have risks ahead of us as far as federal funding, maybe. Right? State funding cuts, maybe. But something that's right here in this city is our kids need to show up to school. We need our families to want to send their kids to our schools, enroll them, keep them in, right? And that's the forefront of our work is to have a schools that they'd want to come to, but then show up to every day. If we didn't have to make a downward adjustment to our revenues because of attendance and enrollment decline, that's $11 million to that negative seven, we'd have surplus. That's how important it is, the work that we're doing out there to make our schools accessible, relevant, exciting, centers of education. Ms. Gardner?
Well, yeah, it's, it's great that our schools attract the students because of their happiness and effort. But I will tell you, my concern is we have to concentrate on producing literate students. I mean, that has, we have a, we have an emergency, a serious emergency. And I see we're talking about next year implementing a identifying future struggling readers.
Dyslexia screening.
Is that what it's for?
Yeah.
Oh, that's for dyslexia. I just, it just bothered my mind that of how many children are going through and are not, not literate, are not able to read.
I'm going to leave that up to our teachers, because I've been out there. We've all been out there. We've been out there and they're putting in the work right now to deal with what we're coming out of the COVID era and the student populations and the struggles that they've had. And we're catching them up. We're seeing that through our data, through our curve from our teachers that we're coming here and presenting that. It's in the early stages of that, absolutely. But I think we're going to remedy what you just pointed out. Absolutely, our kids need to be literate in math and reading.
Well, the reading is the first.
Absolutely. They got to learn how to read so they can read to learn. And that's what our teachers are doing every day in our classrooms and they're putting their all into it. And I think that's happening. Patience and support from us is going to help them see that through. I think that, that we're seeing the early stages of starting to climb out of that, the cold that COVID dug for us already. But I know there's more, absolutely.
Well, you understand that even before COVID. I will say, I'm grateful for the fact that we're concentrating more on phonics again.
Absolutely.
And Horton Gillingham program is very, very valuable.
Yeah.
But it's, it is an emergency. And we have to address it as such. And as I said, having fun at school is great, but loving, you know, this fun and. And as I said, having fun at school is great, but loving, you know, there's fun and enjoying to read, too. I love reading, that's what really bothers me, is that, I know it's no longer Dr. Seuss Day, but Reading Across America is kind of--
Yeah.
And when you read to a child, that is so important, it really is. And I would give that suggestion to the parents and we talked about eliminating cellphones, smartphones in school. Are we doing anything about that?
Yes, yes we are. We're talking with our teachers, the staff, if we have to support that. Everybody has an interest in there not being cellphones.
There is a state law now, is there not?
That we're either to restrict or limit altogether cellphones and develop policies over the next couple of years to do so. And certainly that's one of the things that we're working on here as well.
Okay, and the other thing was, we have an update on the progress of our absentee fund, how it ebbs and flows. And Michelle, you alluded to it a little bit, too, that there were only a few days that we had absentee on a particular day in front, from the outset of the school year. But my question is, have we drilled down into what grade level or having our falling off and--
We can put something like that together, put it into an update, but we're going to also do part of our second interim presentation, which kind of reflects where we're going to be at the beginning of this school year, an update about our attendance at that time. We'll work on some detailed charts, kind of show it by grade level, too. I think we can put that in the report.
I'd be interested to know, yeah, like, it's interesting because it looks like the first, the school year, the higher the absentee rate.
So we've had a struggle since winter break, for sure. And there's been a lot, clearly I've suffered from it myself, like multiple illnesses going around. We've seen it with our staff.
I've heard there's a flu epidemic, yeah.
Yeah.
But don't they make some allowance for that if there's a particular epidemic going around?
No, they do not.
And that's what, when we're noticing the trends, it's following a similar trend with the cold season.
Okay, so that was my question. And also, I have to say, I don't know if this happened to everyone, but it's for a detailed graph of our district, why chronic absentee is a danger for this year, click here. And the click here doesn't work.
That on our website?
So, no, it's on, in the update.
Oh, Friday update?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll question that and get in the update with the working link.
Because that would answer some of my questions.
Yeah, because we do put that on a monthly basis. Okay, here's how the last month worked. But we can make, go back, is that the last week's update?
Yeah.
We can go back, maybe the document after it got shared, something changed or whatever, work that they're doing that kind of made that happen, but we can make sure that link is active this Friday.
Gardner's working on it, right?
That would answer some of my questions about specifically what dates that follow what events.
Yeah, yeah, we could actually copy and paste it back into this update, too. We did kind of an analysis of the-- the date of attendance.
Thanks.
Especially compared to last year so we can see those trends.
Mr. Olson.
Yeah, just a point, and you know, you can, this can be my, get off my lawn moment or something, but I've been banging the drum about, you know, cellphones and limited. I think I've said it here before, I was a terrible student, all K through 12. I was a terrible student, but I loved school. I never missed school. I had perfect attendance, like for nearly my entirety of my thing, but I was terrible. And the reason I had, I loved school was because I had a, there was a connection for me. My friends were there, my teachers that were there. And I really feel strongly that if we can find a way to get these devices out of our children's per year during school, it will start to reconnect with individuals. That will be their place of socialization, that will place, and by default, they, our learning will increase, our engagement will increase, the connection to the teachers will increase. I don't see a downside, so I hope it doesn't take two to three years. I'm probably on an island with my colleagues about being very, very firm, especially like through middle school, but you know, the high school can do what they want. But I use my own example, I loved school, but I was a terrible student. But I loved going there because that was my point of connection and my teachers, you know, I was the kid that got a D, but said, excellent citizenship, pleasure to have in class. I could still pull these report cards and it'll show that. Because my point of connection with my community was school. And in my professional life, I do the same thing, just like today, I was in a senior center for people from 55 to 99 years old. That is their place of connection. It's where they go to connect with people. They're not trying to learn pottery, they couldn't care less, but the pottery class is being offered, so they are there. And so if we can make our campuses a place of connection for our students, the benefits of them being there, we all know, will be positive and the default will be they're there more often, which will give us more resources to help educate our community. So there's--
The law allows us for a couple of years to develop this plan that has made me take that long. What I know, I've talked with some of our teachers and working with, there's a lot of different ways, the different teachers are going about restricting that cellphones in their classrooms and around the school. I believe that through gathering the best practices of what works here for our kids, to restrict the cellphones in the classrooms, that we can enroll out something for the district when we start the new school year. Right now, what's the best way that can work based on what some people are arguing? And there's a lot of other classes right now that is already happening. Now, I know there's lots of aspects that could be really much better. That's what we're trying to build, what does that look like and how we restrict the cellphones throughout the entire day?
That would be my preference, but I could be on an island. I just, you know, I don't want to put another, I don't want to put another burden on the staff on a campus to police this because it will, I promise you, it will be a losing battle. So if you remove that from it, the teachers don't have to worry about it, the parents don't have to worry about it, the students don't have to worry about it. I think there's concerns, this is not on the agenda, so I don't want to go on to it. But any concern I've ever heard is easily, easily overcame. So I don't want that to be a bear. Hope we can be the model and we can be the example of a district that's taking a proactive approach to getting our kids to reconnect on campus and not be the follower. So that's my two cents.
And I have the feeling that it is a 4-0 vote and actually 5-0, that we have a strong policy to roll out at the beginning of this coming school year. I'm also, I will tell you, I'm concerned with the idea that we are going to, that we might look at ways of restricting or, you know, once we leave it up to a classroom decision, how this looks, I would just be, I would just be very opposed, extremely opposed to any idea, to any flexibility because that is, it just sends a message to kids that in some classes, oh, we get to use our cellphones and in others, we don't. And so, you know, and like Mr. Olson, I just see not just the use of cellphones, but the cellphone management. I can't be bothered with anything until I find a place to plug my cellphone in. My cellphone charger isn't working, I've got to go find someone who has a working charger. And it takes precedence over everything. I personally am just totally in favor of no cellphones on campus. I don't know if we can do that.
Well, that's what the law allows for us to do. And I talked about exploring what different strategies are happening now so we can learn from what works at small scale, so we can roll that out at large scale. But everybody has to do it the same way. It's kind of like circling the wagons. We have to create no gap so that we don't start to get the cellphones to sneak back in once we--
They cannot sneak back in. And I also am very supportive of the idea of lunchtimes and breaks, no cellphones.
Yeah.
We have to have time to socialize.
Right.
And I think I may be on an island there. I know the students will oppose that idea, but parents will support it.
We're all on the same island. And I believe I heard from a lot of our staff at schools and parents even, we're all together and we need to work together to help our students understand that you don't need the cellphone to have a full and successful social life that we have in our schools. So I don't have anything else--
We're actually, we'll go ahead and bring our proposal back to the board before we implement, we'll, because we, this was actually a topic of two design team meetings that we've had as well. So we're getting a lot of feedback and then looking at our existing policy, do we need to beef it up? And then we'll bring the proposal to the board for review.
I am done sharing information. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments?
Can I please ask?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I am going a little slow today.
Is there a slide I'm going to go back to?
Let's go to LCAP Goal Two.
Okay.
And I've just got, just questions. I noticed there's a bunch of items on all three LCAP goals that came in significantly higher than the adopted budget. And I'm just wondering what happened. And so let's go to item 2-5, TRAC, budgeted 288, 325, came in at 444, 717. Is there just an individual explanation for each one of these things?
Oh, yeah, everything's going to have its own unique explanation for what cause of effect. I know, Michelle, come up, it's about ALC, but I think you do better about explaining it than you did to me.
So to track all of the initial expenditure within the LCAP, we designated resources. So each action item has its own resource. This has been in practice over the last two years. And as we really start to quantify the action items, we're charting to change the resources so that we can make sure that each item is actually accounted for in regards to the TRAC program. We previously used the same resource for ALC and TRAC. And when ALC, when we went into adopted, we weren't sure which position actually we're going to be from the budget standpoint. And the budget just, we overlooked the ALC component of it, so we under budgeted for the TRAC.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to item 2-6, juvenile diversion. So that is a contract service through compact and it came in three times the budgeted amount.
So also in respect to doing the LCAP, we're looking at every action item that we pay in LCFF supplemental concentration and all of the items that we pay outside in our base and what, how we can best utilize our restricted funds. Supplemental concentration is in our unrestricted balance. However, it does have restrictions, so we treat it as a restricted resource. What we were paying for out of base was our SRO officer. And in talking with Kathleen, it was an appropriate charge to put into this action item that we didn't account for at the time of adoption.
Got it. And there's a similar explanation for each one of these discrepant actuals?
Yes, when we were developing this, this was happening this time last year in March, April, we just didn't have as clear of the information to be able to quantify it to the extent that we are now.
So they were guestimates, basically?
Yes, based off of the, and that's why we do the mid-year review.
Very good. Thank you so much for that explanation.
I have questions again on the yellow highlight. I'm interested in that, and what that means.
Okay, so for the social worker and the counselors, at the beginning or at adoption, we were going, using our supplemental concentration funds to pay for those positions. When our 23, 24 fiscal year had additional money in our EUSD plan, our restricted funds, so we moved those costs out of supplemental concentration into our restricted EUSD plan and funding, allowing us to best to use our funded resources, our most restricted ones first.
That makes sense, thank you. It's a lot to take in, no. I'm sure we'll have more questions, but thank you.
Okay.
No, that was a good, thank you. I like the new way to track them with the designations, that's very helpful to actually see the actual cost.
As I said at the beginning, this is an ongoing study session that we're always looking to get. You have questions, reach out to us so that we can provide clarity and ideas because you're part of the leadership of our district. So thank you for your time and the conversations we've had tonight. And March 6th, we'll bring back our second interim for adoption of the revision to our budget for second interim. And I have one more thing to show you, I forgot for you, Mrs. Harper, the graphical version of our NYPD, the forecaster. So the dark blue line is our adopted budget as it was, you know, when we adopted it in June. Then we went through the process of closing our books, we had some carryover. That light blue line is the, will be our second interim ending balances, that's why it adjusts up from even back into the current carryover amount from last year. And as you can see, as we go forward, that NYPD I showed you that we took out the cuts as if we don't have plans for them yet. If we didn't make those cuts, that kind of pink line crosses the black line. That's the line that follows, right? So the goal is to keep the line above that black line, so you can see at this point that light blue line is above that black line. And that's where that blue circle lives that I talked about earlier. That's how we protect our people, keep ourselves solvent, we're able to protect our people so that they can go do the work that they do, like Ms. Gardner brought up, teaching our kids to read, teach them how to do math, teach them how to be good citizens. We have to protect our circle. And at this point, as we stand now, we're able to, but that work continues. Thank you for your help and thank you for your time tonight. That's the end of it. Turn this over to you, President Paulson.
Right, I'm working for my agenda.
No, it's right here in front of you.
Yes, I am looking forward to our next meeting, which is a regularly scheduled board meeting that will be held on Thursday, March 6th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Escondido Union School District Carolyn Gilbert Education Center. With that, we are adjourned.